Okay, make up five o'clock. So, good evening, welcome to children, families and communities. Just ask if anybody who should be, is in the room is on silent, just in case there's a team that have a bit of feedback. Mr. Many, can you just pass over to yourself?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held in a hybrid format in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governments in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being live streamed. By participating in the meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? If you're joining the meeting remotely, please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Please do not use the hands up function or intervene in any other way. And would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the provisions of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Can members please indicate that they are present? Convenor?
I'm present.
Councillor Anderson?
Present.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
Present.
I have apologies from councillor El Nakla. Councillor Flynn?
Present.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Rome?
Present.
Bailey Sowers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
I'm here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan? Councillor Crookshank? Councillor Finnegan? Councillor McHugh? Councillor McCarvin?
Present.
Councillor Scullen?
Present.
Councillor Shears? Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Bailey Scott? Mrs. McBean? Mrs. Little?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Gibson? Ms. Barclay? Mrs. Javid?
Present.
Mr. Anderson McGinnis? Mr. Anderson McGinnis? I'm not his absence. That concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you very much. Veronica, can we just go on to the first item of business, please?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I'm not saying any indicating?
So we'll move to item two. Parent and pupil representation on the Children, Families and Communities Committee. The first nomination is for parent representation.
Okay, can this be agreed and noted? Okay, that's been approved.
And the next is for pupil representation.
So, yeah, I think we do have Eve Day who's sitting up in the gallery out there, along with her head teacher, Mr. Miller, who will be the pupil representative. I think there's still a couple of bits and pieces just to be sorted out. So, welcome to the meeting tonight. I hope after the end of it, we haven't put you off and you still want to come back and be a part of it. But welcome to the meeting and we'll obviously have that organized for the next meeting. You're welcome anyway. Okay, Veronica?
Item three, follow-up school leaveer destinations. This report is for noted.
Okay, so councillor Coleman, I see you have a comment, so I'll bring you in.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. I would firstly like to say it was really reassuring to read about the progress in achieving excellent levels of school leaveer positive destinations. And this reflects very well on the pupils of Dundee and indeed our excellent teaching staff across the city. I previously highlighted at committee the gap in positive destination statistics between S I M D quantiles one and five. So I'm very pleased to see indeed a closing of the gap by quite a hefty five percentage points. This is really positive. And I hope that the improvement plan, we will see further improvements in closing that gap in future years. So truly this is the testament of our pupils and indeed all our members of staff in relation to this. So thank you.
No, thank you for your comments and certainly agree with you about the work that our staff do in all our schools. And certainly I'm sure the committee would completely agree with all that as well. Councillor Crookshank, I see you're the next, has a question.
Thank you, convener. I welcome this report and it's good to see that this has been an area of priority for our young people in Dundee. The data is moving in the right direction. However, I do note that in the report, some funding has been awarded to coordinate approaches towards improving positive destinations of Dundee's sixteen to nineteen year olds. And that is noted in six point four, two hundred and five thousand four hundred and twenty pound funding from the from the whole family wellbeing fund. It's therefore, how will, how will we continue this improvement when that funding is no longer available? Thank you.
Pass over to Mr. Fleming, you wish to respond to that.
Thank you for the question, councillor Crookshank. Yes, funding has been awarded from the whole family wellbeing fund and for the city council, but also our partners as well, such as S D S and other partners like Dundee and Angus College. And it really is about looking at the examples of really good practice within the local authority and with these partners and looking at excellent practices with the authority and ensuring consistency. So we do have examples of excellent practice, but it's about ensuring consistency working with all of our partners. So in education, children and family services, we work very closely with the executive director of city development, executive director of corporate services as well, to ensure that we put this consistently into practice so that then the learning can take form and be embedded when the funding runs out. The practice should still be embedded at that point.
Happy with that, councillor Crookshank? Okay, councillor Anderson?
Thank you, convener. Apologies for not being able to spell comments properly. I just also wanted to welcome this report, particularly the point made at five point eight, where it's explained that we've now closed the gap by five percentage points and are doing better than the Scottish average on people from lower SIMD quantiles achieving attainment. So that's incredibly hard work to do and congratulations on doing it. My question was around appendix one, because there seemed to be a shift here about less people than expected ending up in higher education and more people going into employment with a seventy percent difference. And I just wondered if you thought that was a positive development or what your views on that were. Thank you.
Okay, pass to Mr. Fleming again.
Thank you very much, councillor, for the comments and indeed the question. I think it's really important that we just keep a close eye on the data and not deem that as positive or negative about changing, you know, changing context. What we're very clear about, and we speak very closely with all our schools and indeed with our partners, is it's about the right opportunity for that young person at that particular point in time. And therefore that can change you and you're depending on the young people and what they are interested in or where they see their future careers. So at this moment, it's an early change. We'll continue to keep a close eye, but we're absolutely focused in our plans on providing the right opportunities, the best opportunities for all young people at the particular point of leaving school. Thank you.
You happy with that? Okay, Bailey Keenan?
I'm just, maybe a couple of questions. I'm just wondering if the drop in further education is an example of the cuts that have went on in that sector. And does my, we know the same places for our young people to go to? And whether the officers have got any statistics on that? And the other question is in relation to the other report that we see on positive destinations that comes through the city development department and wondering if we could marry these up so as that perhaps we're looking at these on the same evening. You know, I think that, you know, the education department are obviously doing an excellent job in trying to improve attainment. And yet when we went to the other report, the other report reflected that we're somewhere around the worst in Scotland. And I think for us as a city, we should be better focused on, you know, the best way that we can, we'd take things forward.
Certainly pass to officers. I mean, I would suggest that part of the problem with the two reports is the reporting time scales are different, which causes some issues, but we can certainly look at that. But I don't know, Mrs. Major, do you want to come in the first instance?
In terms of the drop, sorry, thank you. Thank you. In terms of the drop in further education, we can have a look at that and certainly bring that back to yourselves and to this committee if it would be useful to have more details there. But I think, convener, has partly answered the question. When we bring this report, it is simply school leavers. And so this is what our schools are helping our young people to step into. When we come, the S D S participation rates, which is the other report you referred to, the timeframe is different, but so is the group of young people. It's all sixteen to nineteen year olds in the city that are reported in that particular report. But we can look at how we can bring these together, but I'm pleased to say that the next report, because we've just had that data just this last week and it's improved. So the next one will be a much more positive report. Thank you.
You happy with that, Bailey Keenan? Yeah, okay. I don't see any others wanting to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay. Okay, Veronica?
Item number four, Scottish Qualifications Authority, S Q E twenty twenty four exam results.
Okay, I think councillor Crane, you're first to come in.
Thank you, convener. I'm sure like all members, I would just like to congratulate every young person in the city for their success in this year's S Q E exams, including my younger sister, which we're very proud of. While accepting the point made in the report at four point four about the context and trying to compare attainment and with COVID etcetera, it's very difficult. So I understand that in the report. But just to go on to that, are officers confident that the dip in pass rates compared to twenty-three can be turned around for twenty-five? And just ensure that we're on an upward trajectory?
Okay, thank you a lot. Because I kind of passed officers in the first place, but congratulations to your sister and to all our young people in the city who've done extremely well. And also thank you to all the staff and the parents who supported them as well. But don't miss a fling. Do you wish to come in?
Thank you very much, councillor Crane, for the comments and indeed the question. Children and family service work very closely with all our schools, our trade unions through the local negotiating committee to continue to improve the quality and of education and outcomes for our young people. And every cohort is different. There are always warnings in terms of comparing years on years, but we're very confident that the plans we've put in place, that we'll continue to see an overall upward trajectory in terms of the attainment outcomes for our young people in senior phase. And that's what our tracking data is telling us at the moment in town.
Councillor Crane, are you happy with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, councillor Finnegan, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo that all the hard work and congratulate everybody that was involved in all the exams. When you see it there in five point one of the three thousand two hundred and nine pupils and then just under fifteen thousand awards, that's a lot of work. Having been a college lecturer for all five minutes, I know what's involved there. My comment is on the data that's presented in five point one for S four, how it's broken down. And I think the more I read it, the more confused I get. And I think the use of percentages, but it doesn't give me any totals, you know. I don't know the total of S four that were, that were presented for the award. So the fifty-four percent, I can't quantify that. And then we go on to like obviously a hundred and sixteen pupils. So I think it's the way that it's presented. I think the cynic in me might be saying we're looking at trends and the percentages show improvement. But I know that there's a full report coming late September. So I think in order to be concise, what I'd be looking for is a balanced, still a balanced report. If you're going to break it down into years, I would like to see the actual total, the baseline for each year, whether people fit into each group. For example, S four, forty-two pupils gained at least three advanced hires. I'm not sure if they're within the two hundred and fifty-three or if that's, if they're separate students. So it's just about the way the data has really been presented, if it could be so I could make sense of it. And then obviously if I'm wanting to know what fifty-four percent, I would also like to know what other forty-six percent are doing, you know. And again, twenty percent of S four pupils achieved six and more awards in that fives. But it doesn't tell me any place about the other eighty percent, what they've done. So it's just moving forward if we could have that. And maybe even if you've got that data to hand, it could be circulated so I could make sense of that, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'll pass over to officers in a second. And I certainly think, you know, I take on board a lot of what you've said and I don't know whether perhaps at some point we might want to do a briefing for elected members just to go through a bit more detail than we probably can do tonight in a committee report. But, Mr. Fleming, do you want to start off?
Thank you very much, councillor, for the question and indeed the helpful feedback. And yes, I think a number of people like data presented and percentages and some in numbers. And we'd probably try to do both of that to meet some of his needs, but it certainly would be most helpful for the street thousand odd to be broken down by year group. So we will provide that detail in further report. Just for your information, just now, we have fifteen hundred and twenty-eight pupils in S four, one thousand eight pupils in S five, six hundred and fifty-one pupils in S six. And we have pupils who we support at different age groups, with the council, if you like, into some S threes and some older pupils. But in the further report to come, we'll provide much more detail in the way they suggest as well.
Yeah, I suspect it would be the best way we'll fall as well, is once that report comes, the next committee organizing a briefing for elected members and also the non-elected members to come along and just discuss in a bit more detail and do a bit more thoroughly. Okay, councillor Crookshank?
Thank you, convener. Let me first begin with congratulating the pupils on their exam results and also the teaching staff who assisted them with their achievements. And also offer my commiserations to those who didn't get the grades they wanted. I welcome the report and it's great to see that some of these results have improved when compared to the pre-pandemic, pandemic levels. And it's also good to see that there's improvement for Dundee within the local government benchmark and family group. However, I know that these are considered provisional results and I wonder if officers can let me know when we should expect to see the full set of visuals shared with the committee. I know that they're due in December, but is it December that we receive that report? Thank you.
Okay, just going to ask Mr. Fleming just to confirm.
Thank you very much, councillor Crookshank. The, they have to move their pre appeals, but the individual young people, schools and colleges etcetera will get the reports, individual reports in October. And if the S Q E publishes them in December, we will come back to committee before the end of the year, pending the object of the inside benchmarking. tool, which should be updated at the end of September, which will give an update on these results somewhat, but a wider picture of the other achievements that aren't just about exams. And we hope to win that to committee pending the update of the benchmarking tool.
Happy with that? Okay, councillor Shields.
Thanks very much, convener. And just a short one. Going back to 5.1 again, with S4 and S5, we have comparators with last year, but nothing for our six. Just wondering why we don't have that comparator.
Okay, Mr Fleming?
Thank you. A couple of, thank you for the question, councillor. A couple of quick reasons. One, these results, and when we do the paper, I think the results are out one week. So it is a very quick snapshot and we have just focused on the highlights to give elected members, the committee a flavour of the results. With the S6 year group, it's approximately half the size, if not less than the other groups. And some updates to appeals can make a seismic difference in the overall percentage. So we felt more prudent to wait until those results are confirmed before giving the full update to committee irrespective of whatever that will be later this year. Thank you.
We happy with that, councillor Shields? Okay, Bailey Scott?
It was just to ask if the full update we'll be getting later in the year will include the subjects that were passed, so we can get an indication of how we're performing in maths and sciences and so on compared to previous years.
Mr Fleming?
Thank you again for the question, councillor Scott. We absolutely can provide that detail. I think what's important, as the convener has mentioned, is perhaps a briefing because we can go into copious amounts of paperwork when we look at the different things that people look for. So we'll certainly make sure to provide committee either through the paper or a briefing with the subject results as you've asked for it to. Thank you.
Okay, now, okay, councillor Toend.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if when we get the full report, whether we'll be looking at the SIMD index in terms of hires and that fives as well.
Okay, Mr Fleming?
Thank you, councillor Toend, for the question. Yes, we will ensure as one of our priorities to reduce the poverty gap that we provide that information for scrutiny for the committee.
Okay, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Veronica?
Well, members, please note that at this juncture, external members of the committee will now depart. So we move to item five, adoption of revised scheme for the establishment of community councils.
Okay. May I just give a minute, just allow, I mean, you can stay for the end of the committee, just if you wish, you don't have to take part. But we'll give you two seconds to leave if you wish to. Okay, so councillor Scott, I see you have a question.
Yeah, and on 4.14, it says a promotional campaign will be launched after adoption and prior to elections to promote community councils and the benefits of establishing them. So I just wondered why in the impact statement, there's no positive impacts.
I don't know who the best officer to pass that to this, but Mr Boyle, I didn't see you in there, so I passed to Tony.
Thanks, councillor Scott. And I think that perhaps has just been an oversight that we should have encoded out within the impact assessment, so we'll note that going forward. Thanks.
Are you happy with that? Yeah, okay. I don't see, oh, just as I was about to say, don't see anybody else coming in, Bailey Scott jumped us out, so absolutely fine. So Bailey Scott, pass yourself.
It was just asked about the elections because it says in the report that they would be from the 1st of March 2025. So what format does that take? Are they all going to be held on the same day or if it's from 2025, is it rolled out over a period?
Mr Bell, I'll pass yourself or who else you want to?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor Scott. Can I defer to Mr Many to respond to that?
Okay, Mr May?
It's agreeable to Bailey Scott, prefer to respond separately.
Yes, of course. Just to make sure I'm all elected members.
And if you could get back to me before the community council meeting in probably thirty weeks tomorrow, that would be, that would be handy.
No question.
I'd have to do that.
Okay. With that, can this report be ignored? Okay, Veronica?
Item number six, Community Learning and Development Plan 2024 to 2027.
Okay, Billy Bigfirst, let's see, you wish to come in?
Thanks very much, convener. I do have an area of concern, but I don't want that to overshadow the fact that there's a lot of really good information in the Community Learning and Development Plan. And I think we would all agree that the team do a sterling job right across our city. My area of concern, and I have raised it and discussed it with the Community Learning and Development Manager, is the fact that although on page 52, it talks about, and I'll quote, citizens can expect high quality capacity building and community development support to enhance their existing skills and abilities. The reality is that in the West End Ward and indeed in the Ferry Ward, that capacity has been halved with the removal of one of the two members of staff, which are actually not two per ward, but are actually two shared between the two wards. It has always been the case that both the Ferry Ward and the West End Ward are given less capacity. And with no particular complaint, we all understand the SIMD levels varying between wards across the city. However, this has effectively halved the capacity to effectively just half a full-time equivalent member of staff in each ward. Now, I did make a complaint that frankly, for the team that frankly have a very good record in terms of consultation with the communities. There was frankly no consultation whatsoever on this and it was a bit of a fait accompli in terms of that member of staff being redeployed. The question I've got, and to be absolutely fair to the Community Learning and Development Manager, he accepted that point. And I think there's a willingness to strive to improve that should there be any changes in capacity in the future. My question fundamentally is this. Two wards have had their capacity halved. Can we get an assurance that when it is possible, that will be reviewed and the capacity taken back to the point that we have two half-time, full-time equivalents in each ward going forward? Now, thank you, convener.
No, thank you very much, person. Mr Bell, I'll pass you, but I do know Marie Daly's on the call, so I don't know if that's who you want to pass to, but I'll pass you in the first place.
Thanks, convener, and thanks, Billy McPherson. I'm happy to confirm that I think Billy McPherson's asking that if we undertake a review. That is my plan as a new executive director to look at all the resources around that. And I can't give any other assurances at this stage other than that I will undertake a review. Thanks.
Billy McPherson, are you happy with that?
Yeah, I'm more than happy with the fact that a review will take place. Quite clearly, you will understand, and I think I can speak for elected members in both wards in saying that it would be much appreciated if the previous level of community regeneration work in terms of staffing was restored. And I'll obviously, along with other members in my ward and indeed in the Ferry Ward, look forward to hearing further from Mr Boyle on that in due course. So I'm grateful for Mr Boyle's response, convener. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Billy McPherson. Councillor Short?
Thank you, convener. Hopefully it's a very simple ask. And there have been changes around the various family trees of community workers. And I just wondered if it would be possible to get an updated reference. I know there's been some retirements and movements across the city. So if you could, for all of us presumably, so we know who's actually on board each of the areas, please.
Yeah, I'm sure that shouldn't be a problem, but Mr Boyle, just confirm just that that will be big concern, I could be. Okay, now we'll get that out to all members. Councillor Scott?
I just wondered why, just after a report about the new establishment of community councils, that they aren't mentioned in this CLD plan.
Okay, Mr Boyle, do you want to take this in first instance?
Yeah, I'll maybe ask Mrs Daly to come in in a second, but I should just remind the committee that this is a high level document. I've got a requirement to produce this report under the Community Learning and Development's Con regulations 2013. So it's not intended to be a complete overview of everything that we do within community learning and development. It's a broad-based, high-level document that talks about, you know, key areas and kind of high level. So I'll pass one to Mrs Daly if she's got any comments.
Okay, Marie, I'll just pass yourself to answer the question.
I think Tony's answered that it is high level. And as you'll be aware, we work with a very large number of groups. So to get into that individual detail at this stage would be too much. But rest assured, when we relate to the capacity building element, we include community councils as part of that.
Okay, you happy with that answer? Okay, councillor Anderson?
Thank you. It's a question, I mean, I wanted to thank the Community Learning Development Team for this report and all the amazing work they do. And I had a question here about the Community Learning Development Plan priorities on pages 51 and 53. And on page 51, it mentions Child Poverty and Income Attainment and Health inequalities board. And I don't, I didn't know who was on that board and I haven't had time to look it up, sorry. But I don't know if any of those meetings are public. It would be very interesting to find out more about the work of that board. So whether they meet in public and some link to find out more about the work of the board. And on page 53, we talk about health inequalities. Now, Marie will know that this is one of my hobby horses. But what we now know is that the unhealthy life expectancy for a man living in the poorest areas in Dundee is now around 44. So from the age of 44, men living in the poorest areas of Dundee can expect to start experiencing ill health. And one of the key contributors towards that is food. So I just wondered if there's any remit or discussion in the strategic planning advisory group about the role of food and diet.
Okay, thank you. I may just pass to Mrs Major for the first question because I think it's your board, but just confirm that. Welcome to Mr Bell for the second part of your question.
Yeah, just to confirm that that Child Poverty and Inequalities Board is co-chaired by myself and Dr Emma Fletcher, the chief exec of Public Health NHS T side. So we will be bringing reports periodically back to committee through the Dundee Partnership. So it's part of the Dundee Partnership boards so we can get information.
Okay, and Mr Boyle, do you want to answer the second part of the question?
Yeah, in terms of health inequalities, the lead group is Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership Strategic Planning Advisory Group. And this group sits under the IGP, is chaired by Dave Berry. And involves partners from across the public and voluntary sector, working together to deliver strategic priorities. And we have representation on that council.
You happy with that response?
Yeah, happy to look into this more after the meeting. Thank you.
And councillor McKeer? But he switches his microphone first thing.
Is it okay now?
Yes, thank you very much.
I appreciate this is a high level report. I had a number of questions that I asked of Marie Daly earlier on today. She was very helpful in explaining quite a lot to me, especially about some of these groups that Heather's just been asking about. One of the things I noticed in the report and I commented on was there was no mention of older people. There was mention of young people, families, communities. No specific mention of older people. Now, I understand older people are part of families and part of communities. But there was an emphasis within the report on younger people, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. But older people have specific requirements as younger people do. And I do think there should be in this high level report a bit more, they should be mentioned. In fact, the only place that older people are mentioned is when they're called pensioners in the Intercrated Impact Assessment. And we're much more than pensioners. I'm a working older person. So it's just a plea, please, for a bit more, you know, recognition of the percentage proportion of older people that we have across the city and their needs and aspirations.
No, I think that's a fair point, but Mr Boyle, I'll just ask you to respond.
Thanks, councillor McKeer. Yeah, point duly noted and we'll take cognizance of that for future reports.
Yeah, councillor Fagan?
Thank you. I've just got a very quick question on the unmet needs. I'm understanding like you need to have the flexibility to for emergency situations and things to allow the resources to go where they're needed. And that's great that that's been put into the plan. But my concern is, have these needs been assessed and they're unmet? If the plan going forward was to target early intervention, but there's none of that, these needs going to be met within three years, that's not early intervention. So I'm just wondering what these needs are, how significant they are. And is there anybody else that could meet them, like third sector or what kinds of needs are they?
Thank you. I'll pass over to Mr Boyle.
Thanks very much for the question, councillor, and thanks, convener. I will pass this on to Mrs Daly to respond to.
Marie, just ask you to respond to that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it's obviously very hard to quantify unmet needs as they are needs that arise. And as you are aware, the plan is part of the Dundee Partnership and the Dundee Partnership Board. So we look at different needs as they arise and have to prioritize and respond accordingly. And the partnership is made up of not only the council, but people from the voluntary sector and other agencies. So the purpose of those groupings and those boards is to actually look at where and when those needs arise and see who is then best placed to meet them. So it's not always the council who will be responding.
Are you happy with that response? Yeah, okay, councillor Short?
Thank you, convener. It was just a comment with regards to the plan 21 to 24. In 10 days' time, at the Appse Conference in Bristol and the award ceremony, the actual Llanawthin project is up for award. So I'll be, fingers crossed. And it's just to congratulate everybody across that project because it is multi-agency. But it's actually been pitched against the whole of Northern Ireland, Wales and the regions within England as well as Scotland. So they've done really, really well to work across that whole family unit and try really hard to support everybody in the community of Llanawthin and it's excellent work. Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments, councillor Short. And I'm sure that the whole committee echo what you've said and wish them all the best with the awards. I know there's a lot of good work that goes on by that team, but also another other teams in the communities department who've done a fantastic job over the last few years. So best of luck to them. Councillor Flynn?
Thanks, convener. I just said some of the reports tonight have actually been very positive and I like to thank all the teachers, especially the previous of course. But the community one we're talking about now, I think we have a lot of great workers working within our communities. And if committee will indulge me, I'd like to just say thank you to one who works in the Colsey Ward, Elaine Pratt, who's retiring in the coming weeks. And I think she's done an excellent job on her tenure working with the communities. And we've achieved some great things within the ward. So I'd just like to say thanks to her for all her efforts and also to all the other community officers who are working in the community, working extremely hard with all the groups to achieve the best for the city. Thank you.
No, thank you for those comments, councillor Flynn. Obviously councillor Smith and I have been out visiting a number of these projects over the last few weeks and few months and really impressed by a lot of the good work that the community staff put in. And we've certainly been in your ward a couple of times recently with Elaine, who does an amazing job. And she will certainly be a huge loss to the team when she retires as well, but the staff do do an amazing job. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay, and I think that's it for children, families and communities. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, and welcome to neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management committee. Veronica, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I don't see any, so just move on, please.
Item two, sourcing strategy for the tender of twenty-four flats at Blackness Road.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thank you. Our group often raise issues around what is delegated to officers as opposed to coming back to committee for a decision. But we're not opposing this particular recommendation at two point one at all. Because we strongly believe that speed is now frankly of the essence with regard to this particular project. And our area of concern is about frankly the slippage that has taken place in terms of time. At a time when construction inflation, as the report itself alludes to, has been galloping away. And if I can give you some of the background, because obviously this is in my award and I was heavily involved, as were my then-ward colleagues in the consultation exercise. And the significant debate over what to do with the flats, with the stairwell issue, which have since been demolished. Now, if I go back to August twenty eighteen, I have a memo, I've still got it in my possession, from the then-service housing manager, indicating that a rebuild option, he was going through the various options about replacing the stairwells as opposed to demolition and rebuild. And demolition and rebuild looked very attractive at that point at a cost of three point two seven five million. I now have a memo from, an email from the twenty-third of February from the department indicating that the total build cost is now ten point three million pounds, ten million three hundred nine thousand five hundred and sixty pounds. An absolutely worrying increase in the cost. And also what is worrying is that at the time of the original calculations, it was envisaged that the total Scottish government bid would amount to four point three five six million. And we're now told in this report, in fact, I was told it in February, that the amount that Scottish government may be prepared and we don't know for sure we'll even get the maximum grant payable. But that's only three point, sorry, two point three two six million pounds, a shortfall of over two million, two million and twenty-nine thousand pounds to be exact. My question's really about getting assurances that we're going to be able to progress this now quickly. Because quite clearly, the last of the demolition was exactly three years ago, September twenty twenty-one. And here we are, three years later with a gap site and no housing going on that site. And we gave a commitment to the community at the time of demolition that these flats would be provided. They're vitally needed, I think we all agree, in relation to the crisis in relation to house building and the need to have more affordable housing in the city. And I'm just really seeking assurances in terms of timeframe going forward, assuming, and I hope we will, all agree this hosting strategy tonight. I'd really like assurances from officers that we will try to move this forward as fast as we possibly can, particularly given the ongoing construction inflation situation, which has really frankly galloped away since the demolition was completed three years ago.
Yeah, thanks, Bill McPherson. And I take on board what you're saying. I think we take into account obviously Covid cost of living and the unprecedented inflation measures which were brought upon us from external measures. But I'll pass it on to Miss Clayton, or sorry, Mr. Boyle in the first instance, please.
Thanks very much, Convenor. Thank you, Bailey McPherson. We note the point around the assurances to have this done quickly. And the report at six point one confirms our intention to report the result of the tender process to, we hope, the neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management committee of the second of December twenty twenty-four. This will allow us to advise committee an update on the results of the competitive tender as we have indicated within the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill McPherson. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, obviously, I'd read that in the report. The assurance I'm seeking is that we actually meet that and that we then are able to gallop ahead with actual construction thereafter. And, you know, there's no need for me to ask anything further of Mr. Boyle. The department knows my concerns about the slippage in this. I'm very grateful to both Mr. Boyle and Miss Clayton for a briefing that I had with them a number of weeks ago on the issue. And I just hope and keep fingers crossed that we will now see speedy progress with regard to this project. So thank you for that.
No, thank you. I think the procurement process will take place and I think it's important it will start if this committee approves the report. And hopefully some tenders will be received, which is the most important mark for any progression and any discussion from that. Thank you.
I see no further questions. So can move on, Veronica, please, until that's agreed.
Thank you. Item three, procurement of works to install retrofit fabric upgrades in the Fleming Gardens area, including Fleming Trust.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Convenor. And in three point three, and this probably gives a little bit reference to what Bailey McPherson was talking about. And it's got the expression any material deviation. And I'm just looking at if this is a percentage and also. Sorry, too far away. This is more to do with the fact that this is a procedural thing because it will come back anyway to committee, whether it's the material deviation or not.
Thank you. I'll pass over to Mr. Boyle, thanks.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Shaw. Yeah, there's a material deviation of around ten percent. But the intention is to come back to, to present a future committee in any case. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Councillor Crouchshank, please.
Thank you, Convenor. It's just to welcome this initiative. And it's been a long time and not often, and I'm sure the residents and the tenants of Fleming Gardens will be absolutely delighted, given the fluctuations within energy prices, et cetera. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And I think it's also in my word as well. And I think the residents are very keen to see that installed, the benefit they get from external inflation. So we'll be looking forward. I even got asked the date of the surgery when it's coming. And hopefully it'll be here as soon as we can. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? I'll take that as agreed. Veronica, please.
Item number four, procurement of works to install retrofit fabric upgrades in the Glen Prozen terrace and Lawton First areas.
I don't see any questions, so I will just take that as agreed as well. Thank you. Veronica, please.
Item five, sourcing strategy for the procurement of window refurbishment services.
It's quite clear. The report says. Councillor Clayton, is the other question.
Thank you, Convenor. Members of our group have raised the deterioration conditions of a number of test windows. And I think we all would accept that, as mentioned in four point one. And lifespan of the windows replaced under the Windows for All programme in the nineteen nineties is nearing its end. And that was older than I actually am. So I think we need to get moving with this. And it was reassuring to read that the programme of development to scale up the windows replacement is ongoing. And there's a lot that is in the report that is very good. But could officers give some reassurances as there's time scales involved in drawing this up? And is there sufficient HRA capital monies that will be pulled in possibly in replacement? And just kind of a time scale and see what we can do with this.
Thank you for the question. I think I'll pass it on to Miss Clayton, please.
Thank you for the question. I think the answer is probably best given in two parts. We have carried out an end-year look at the current capital programme. And within that, we've been able to boost the window programme in the immediate term. We are also, of course, constantly revising what we are taking forward in terms of investment as part of the capital planning process. And we are looking to see what level of refurbishment and replacement of windows will be feasible within the capital plan. Obviously, we're going through the consultation process just now for the HRA rent levels. And these two issues are linked and proposed to be brought back to members as part of the normal planning process. And hopefully at that point, we should be able to outline what we think the feasible replacement life cycles are for windows going forward, depending on the different levels of investment that can be funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, councillor Clayton?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. I mean, because Bailey McPherson get asked this a lot, so it's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope I get you the reassurance. Thank you. Nice to see other questions. I think that's agreed. Thank you, Veronica.
Item number six, tenders received by head of design and property.
End of year conversion for my HMO and my local base and our proper case. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Just, it's my job to sort of keep an eye on climate change, just very glad that the seventy-one boilers that are going to be replaced are going to be greedy efficiency with hydrogen blend in there for future proofing. So just welcome.
Oh, here we go, it's back again. Sorry about that. Thank you very much for your comments. I think that's real important that we actually make sure we are covering our bases and making sure that the boilers we put in are just not fully for gas, but also to cover agents as well. Thank you. Veronica.
Up all the items tonight, Convenor.
The end of the committee. Thank you very much. Over to you, Willie, please.
Thank you very much, Convenor. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
See no declarations. Will you just move on, please?
Yeah, thank you. There have been no declarations. Take you on to item two, antisocial behaviour, January to June. It's items for noting.
Thank you. Councillor Coleman, let's see, in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. The detail of closed cases is given. And it's good to see that the vast majority are closed due to issues being resolved. However, a fairly small number said to say were closed due to no contact. And I'd be grateful if officers could clarify in what circumstances the case is dropped due to difficulty with contacting the tenants involved. Clearly, we would not like to be in a situation where a tenant reports a legitimate complaint, but the case is simply closed because the other tenant proves half the contact.
Thank you. Holly, Holly's online, I believe. Holly Anderson.
Hi there. Thanks for the question. So our officers will make contact via telephone, email, also put a card to the door, and we'll send out two letters before we close off the case as well. We must attempt that before we close it off.
Councillor Coleman, answer your question.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See councillor, oh, sorry, Bailey Scott. Sorry, my apologies. Councillor Finnigan.
Thank you. It was just regarding the youth disorder. I'm just wondering if any of the antisocial behaviour complaints was about youths on off-road bikes? And if there's been any engagement with the youths on that.
Yeah, thanks very much. It's something I've been bringing up with the perspective of the area of similar problems in my ward as well. Holly.
We have, and I think possibly off the top of my head, I don't have the figures to back this up, but I'd say maybe one or two. It's not something that's being reported to us regularly. While seeing numbers of police calls creeping up on this and are in discussions with our colleagues at Police Scotland about this.
Yeah, thank you. That's your question. Thanks very much. And Billy Scott, please.
In the two tables about showing the closed cases, on both of them, it says there's one case that was unable to resolve. I don't know what to know the details of the case, but I just wondered what we do in that situation. Because presumably we can't leave people in limbo, living with the same problem that they've had all this time. We've just not been able to resolve it. So presumably there's something we do do to continue to support those people. And the second question, if I may, Convenor, it talks about an issue of antisocial behaviour that was occurring in the multi-storey car parks and that it was actioned, damage was actioned swiftly. The Green Market is my car park of choice when I come down to the town. And on the upper stories, I notice there's still quite a bit of graffiti there that hasn't been cleaned off. So it's not very nice for visitors to the city. And they're reluctant to use it when they see the amount of graffiti that's there. So perhaps that could be actioned.
No, thanks very much. And I think officers will take care of us coming on board anyway. But Holly, would you like to come back and explain something, please?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would probably need to check the unable to resolve one. Off the top of my head, I would say if it's something that probably isn't antisocial behaviour. Or perhaps we've highlighted that mediation would perhaps work best. And both parties have not been willing to do that. Then we're unable to resolve with the tools that we've got. But I will check that one and see what I can come back with. Just in regards to the car parks, I completely agree. This does seem to be an ongoing issue. Our team and the community safety team and the Safety and Alarm Response Centre, we're all coordinating on a daily basis regarding this. It seems to be a bit of a difficulty getting the kids identified because they're from out with. But we are continuing to work with Police Scotland on this. And we do have a few identified this week. So there will be some visits carried out with the police.
Thank you. So that's your question, though, Scott? Yeah, thanks. And I think officers will take on board the message about the graffiti as well, that actioned. Councillor Rowan, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Just to echo the comments from councillor Finnigan earlier on, you know, I would welcome the low figures of antisocial behaviour in the North East Ward. However, I don't think we should take it for granted that necessarily means there's a low level of antisocial behaviour that exists. So I just wondered if Holly could maybe just remind us of the different mechanisms that people can report antisocial behaviour. Because I'm just concerned that we have heard from the LCPP, there have been incidents of vandalism in the ward, et cetera. So it might be useful just to be reminded of how behaviour can be reported.
Thank you. Holly, please.
Thank you. So we have an online tool. We've got, obviously, the good call-in. We also have a fortnightly MATAK meeting where we'll look at calls that are coming in from the police. So if there's a high level of vandalism, we'll openly just go out and visit that area, discuss with residents. I do think, given the North East, quite a lot of not tenement blocks, perhaps that comes into play. That would be my answer off the top of my head. But certainly, members of the public can, they could write in, they could email in. We've got a generic mailbox. We've got an online reporting forum. And then obviously our contact information. We do do various drop-ins if we're asked to do them as well in the community centres. So that's always an option if there's something timetabled in.
Thank you. Councillor.
Yeah, I think that's extremely helpful. I missed the first comment. You said something about a walk, but I do think that's useful. I think maybe we need to be cognisant that not every area has the same levels of support in terms of community groups for making contact. So I think it's useful to use every means possible to contact people and make sure that they in town can contact services.
Okay, thank you. And I see, oh, sorry, councillor Hunter.
Yeah, no, thank you, Convenor. I'm just looking at the stats, particularly for Shorth Martin, and youth disorder is one that, you know, kind of leaps out to you. I was at our LCPP last week at the other community centre where, actually, we were having to almost shut the other community centre early because of issues with youth disorder that's been going on over the summer period. So just really interested to hear what's been done to resolve that. But also, you know, obviously people, also this is an antisocial report, but there's a role here for children, families and communities, particularly with, you know, schools about how we work with these young people. So. So I suppose it's a question of what's been done. Obviously, Shorth Martin is a particular issue here, but I'm sure there's similar issues across the city.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a very good point. Holly, would you like to come back now and explain the services that provision, how we are working with our teams possibly?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the Adler is a good example of really good partnership working. So obviously, at that point, I think what was good to note was that the kids were attending for the excellent work that communities provide for young people in the area. And it was a very small percentage that were causing antisocial behaviour there. So ourselves, the community, the C L D youth worker staff, the community safety wardens, the police. So police and community safety wardens were patrolling regularly. They were getting us names. We were then following that up with a visit to parents, just to inform them or sending out letters and things like that. We also noticed that quite a high level of kids were attending on the buses and the buses were being vandalised. So our officers, our youth officers and also Police Scotland visited five primary schools in the area and we did some preventative talks on antisocial behaviour on the buses with primary fives, sixes and sevens, I think, if that was correct. And this is something that we're hoping to roll out. We've also done it in the East End Ward as well.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Hunter.
No, thank you for that. I said earlier, when we had the meeting last week, the committee were really interested about how we would go about resolving some of these issues. So that's been really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Toone, please.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the stats for action taken and obviously quite a lot around advice. Just wondering, does the advice resolve the issues? Or is there any data to suggest that the reopening of cases comes from that? Just wondering how effective that advice and guidance might be.
Again, Holly, would you like to come back?
I'll be completely honest, I'm not sure if I could get data on that. But obviously, we always go in with advice in the first instance, but I'll certainly look into that for you and see if that's something we could get some data on.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Holly. I'd be appreciated. Billy Keenan, please.
If I may make a comment, obviously, on cases where they're closed out and the individual may have received housing points based on the threat that they were under from their neighbour. I'm wondering if we make people aware of that when we're closing out a case. And if we're not, perhaps we should. Because then whilst they're looking to be rehoused, they may well be wanting to still engage with antisocial behaviour team rather than just let things lapse because potentially they feel threatened by the person that was giving them the grief to start with. And if I can make a comment in relation to the troubles at Adler. We have C C T V outside Adler complex and I'm wondering if we've ever picked up anything for antisocial or antisocial behaviour on these cameras, given the vehicles belonging to council were damaged parked outside the place. You know, had the mirrors broke off them, which would have been a considerable cost. And whilst they reported that as soon as they could, I have never had any feedback as to whether we've been successfully called N E B account for doing it.
Couple of questions here, Holly. Possibly when you might have to come back on as well with some more further information, but Holly, would you come over there?
Yeah, apologies if I've interpreted your question wrong. So in regards to the social points, they are reviewed from our letting staff. So they'll come, so if we've awarded social points for a specific resident, they'll come to us. I think it's three monthly. I might be wrong with that. And they'll ask if these are still required. So for example, if we know that that problem tenant has perhaps moved out, then the points wouldn't be required anymore. But if they do, we'll continue to keep them on the application form, whether they've got an open case with us or not. And just in regards to C C T V, that was most helpful. The church next to Adler was also being targeted and their help, their C C T V was very helpful in identifying the young people as well.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions, so I'll take that report as agreed. Thank you very much. Holly.
Okay, thank you. Take you on to item three, National Care Service for Scotland, response to the call for evidence. Could I ask to agree the recommendations?
It's just asked to consider and agree a draft response that submitted to the call for evidence but launched the H S C S committee on the amendments. Any questions, comments? Councilor Duncan, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I'll begin with a comment and then a couple of questions. Well, one question, will we? Obviously, you know, opinion is, you know, not uniform on the wisdom or merits or demerits of the National Care Service, the N C S. I would reiterate that myself and my party have been quite consistently opposed to it for the number of reasons which I'm not going to belabor with you with tonight. Although I would say that we're fair on other items that, you know, economically, the outlook is extremely challenging for the number of reasons, you know, inflationary pressures, budgetary uncertainties. And whether you're a fan of the N C S or not, I would, you know, really ask if this is the best time to be going forward with hugely expensive projects, which we're not all agreed on. However, having said all that, I would just say that, you know, my group, you know, we're actually quite happy with the comments that officers have divided. So we're certainly not going to put forward an amendment or anything like that. You know, what I would like to get at from officers, if they might have read the reports, and there's actually two areas which they have said that they are strongly opposed to in their comments. One would be the inclusion of children's services in any such new service. Equally, they're opposed to the inclusion of justice and social work. These are areas which are obviously dealt with locally here in Dundee in our own way. And personally, I would like to see that continue. And my question to officers is just, what is the impact of the potential uncertainty around all of this for their ongoing work? And would they have any idea at all if the N C S were to go forwards and include these vital areas? Any idea of the financial impact upon this council?
This report is just a draft response. I'll take on your comments at the beginning and the Scottish Government is setting it clear that the National Care Service remains unchanged. Although the route to achieving this may change, and I think that's what we're trying to do here, is to actually feed back into that. But I'll bring Scholar onto the answer of the following questions.
Yeah, so there has been a lot of debate about children's social work and criminal justice and services. I think the reason we are strongly opposed to it is because it isn't consistent across Scotland at the moment. So some have got it delegated, others haven't. And what we would say is there is no evidence one way or the other that it would be better to just be delegated on the financial side of it. We're still not clear exactly what will happen financially, how the funding will be changed if the services are taken in. And I don't know if you maybe want to bring Mr. Lloyd in just around maybe the impact on current services and how people might be feeling about that.
Okay, thank you. Glynn, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor, and thank you for the question as well. And I think it would be fair to say that we don't disagree with any of the principles of the consultation or the proposed National Care Service in terms of accessible support, consistent support, co-designed services, valuing the workforce, et cetera, et cetera. But we are concerned about the possibility of creating more coherence in one part of the system and at the same time fracturing, in effect, another part of the system. And obviously, locally, the Children and Families Service includes both schools and social work services and, in fact, justice. And I think we can demonstrate through our promise that we've made major achievements, major progress over the last four years, particularly since the Independent Care Review was published. And my main worry would be that that would be jeopardized or disrupted. I'm conscious that Scottish Government make reference to that risk in its most recent correspondence and want to work with us to mitigate that risk. And obviously, that is what we will need to do going forwards in whatever form or shape the National Care Service ultimately takes.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Duncan.
Okay, if I can just come back in before you, Convenor, I mean, I've listened to what officers have said and the good stuff that's been going on in Dundee in particular way in relation to these two vital areas. And suppose, listening to what Miss Calder said, in a way, and it's not to put words in her mouth, but perhaps to summarize, it's like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. If there's no compelling evidence one way or the other, then personally, I'd like to just see us continue in our way.
Okay, I'm telling all your comments. Thank you. Billy Keenan, please.
Thanks, Convenor. I mean, I look at these, we get the report from officers on a regular and see that we're not getting much of a feedback from government in relation to anything that we've suggested. Because we seem to suggest the same thing time and time again. And looking at that report, it still looks like the I G B's in. I think Councilor Lynne said to me, no, that's not the case. So, you know, I wonder whether we're needing another report to come back to tell us what's been acknowledged on the items that we've put forward and what's been accepted. Another area of concern for me is I would be hoping that in the National Care Service, we'd be looking at a standard of care that was at the highest possible and that it wasn't looking at the lowest common denominator. And in that, I think there is probably a need for us to be asking for additional money for adapted houses. Because I know of at least a couple of people that have been, that are bed blocking at the moment. There's a real issue and it's whether it's council or the Housing Association. But there's a real issue in how we cope with the amount of houses that we need. Councilor Anderson obviously mentioned that people in Dundee, given where we are, obviously live real health for much longer. So there is probably some ongoing need that we would need to produce disabled adapted houses that suit people's needs much better. So how do we go about achieving that or highlighting that that's an issue of concern for us, given that we haven't even got a a housing emergency in Dundee where everyone else is?
And we'll go over all ground there, I think. Bring in Mr. Berry to maybe give some evidence on with regards to answering the question with regards to the delayed discharge. Dave, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Billy Keenan, for the question. So as you'll be aware, the issue of delayed discharge is a national focus. There is a weekly meeting held, hosted by Cabinet Secretary and Councilor Kelly from Cosla to really kind of have an oversight of what's happening nationally around that. And in terms of this subject matter, every week, obviously, delayed discharge is the main issue. But we're starting to kind of look at different areas that need, different initiatives that need to be put in place to try and improve the delayed discharge across the country. And so for it comes to Dundee, our performance is really good. We are actually in the top kind of quartile of performance across Scotland. But you're absolutely right, there are remaining a number of challenges around the availability of adapted housing. We have undergone quite a significant investment programme. Dundee City Council has contributed to that over a number of years. However, with the restrictions and current funding, there are more limited opportunities to develop that. We do have the opportunity to feed back as officers back to Scottish Government around those challenges though that you've raised.
Thank you. Billy Keenan, come back.
Yeah, Convenor, then can we see the officers make that challenge and make aware on how that challenge was put to government?
I think he answered the question. He says that regularly put that back in the regular meetings I have. Would that be right? Yes, Dave's saying on his head. So I think that's a regular feedback and updates from that. Thank you. Councilor Finnigan, please.
Thank you. One of my questions has just been answered there. But my comment really was about the delayed discharges. You know, the focus is specifically on that. And I think that's a bit like shutting the gate once the horse is bolted. I think what we need to do is we need, and the government need to focus on preventing admission in the first place. And that is the only way you're going to do that. There's loads of really good work community health-wise from statutory organisations and third sector involuntary organisations going on in the community. But we need to work more joined up. And then I think what we do need is we need to value our social carers and show that that is a career worth progressing and our community nursing staff, that we are the ward without walls. We can't say that we don't have to bed blocking, as I like to call it. People come home to their homes and nurses, whether you're there or not on shift, you're expected to attend. I think there's loads of work to be done on that. The National Care Service in my head might not be the same as what's in everybody else's. What I'd hope to gain from that is a consistent, measurable service that is clinically governed. So we could keep standards high and people that get care get it when they're needing it from the people that they're needing it. But seeing it in print that the focus was on delayed discharges is like planning your home from holiday before you've planned your getaway. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I don't disagree with much what you've said there. I think that's what we're aiming for. And I think that's what the National Care Service is trying to do with going forward when it comes into place. But Dave, would you like to come back and answer that with regards to the delayed discharge again, please?
Yeah, I just absolutely agree with the comments around the prevention agenda. Because the prevention agenda is really what we're trying to achieve from a health and social care partnership perspective. So that investment in early intervention is quite clear in I G B's strategic plan. And the strategic direction is around shifting that resource more to that prevention agenda from the high end, high cost. Whether it's in hospital stays or whether it's in other kind of institutional stays, that remains our primary objective.
Thank you. Yep, thanks very much. Councilor Lynn, please.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Ironically, the reason I'm not with you tonight is because I'm not feeling particularly well. It is ironic given the subject matter, but I just picked up on something that the Councilor Keenan said. I wasn't too sure what he meant when he said that the I G B's are in. And just to clarify what the current position is, I think the original intention of what is now a much slimmed down set of proposal in terms of the National Care Service. What was originally proposed was for local care boards to be formed. There was a lot of uncertainty about that, a lot of uncertainty about what input councillors would have, what geographical area the local care boards would cover, whether that would be just out of the council area or a larger area. So I think a lot of that uncertainty has been cleared up by the most recent proposals, which are now not to abolish the I G B's as such, which was the original plan, but to reform them. And some of the ideas that are floating around about that is that perhaps, for example, they might have an independent chair. And also in terms of voting rights, rather than just the six members who are made of three councillors and three members of N H S T side board, would be voting rights extended to all members of the board. So, yeah, I welcome the fact that, you know, because I actually think that the I G B in Dundee has worked well. And I think we performed well. I actually think in recent years, we've improved services despite the financial challenges. So, yeah, just to clear that up really, but what the way I see it, that's the current state of the I G B's. There's not a lot that I disagree with. In fact, there's nothing I disagree with in our draft response. But I particularly welcome that there's now a guarantee that we will remain responsible for providing services as a council to our people. So thanks, Convenor.
No, thank you for your comments and for the update of what's happening there. And I think prevention has been touched upon by Dave there was actually the right thing to do and Councilor Finnigan. And I think that's the proper direction. It's been said recently by the F M. Thank you very much. I see no further questions. We'll take that as agreed. Thank you. Holly.
Thanks very much, Convenor. Item four, the communication and journaling applications, seesaw software. Could I ask to agree the proposals?
It's quite clear what this one was for. Are there any questions on this? Councilor Short, please.
Actually, I've got two questions. And the first question is with regards to Appendix A and the family engagement overview. And just because of the fact that many families could have digital exclusion, it looks like nineteen percent of families don't engage. So I just wanted to check in presumably with our colleagues from Children and Families in Education that if that is the case, they will know who those families were and use the old fashioned way of putting stuff in the school bag to communicate with the families. And the other bit was actually for Mrs. Calder and it was to do with the fact that presumably this can be a way to communicate and remind our families in the city that the under twenty-two bus passes are available. And I know that they've done really, really well to get it through and get it to as many homes as possible. But bearings keep growing, so new ones are becoming eligible all the time. So it was a double question there, please. Thank you.
Yeah, speak to them in there. I'll ask Mrs. May to answer the first one. Or Mr. Fleming, firstly, please.
Thank you very much. I can answer short for the question. Yes, the expectation is, of course, that all schools communicate with all families. And whilst we would want folks to engage in a digital way for a number of reasons, we want to make sure that we communicate. And whilst we would want folks to engage in a digital way for a number of reasons, we want to make sure that we communicate with all families. So we do ask families for the preference. And for those families we know don't engage, we make sure we provide paper copies or if you'd like even in-person information. And this software helps us do that to exactly know the families who don't engage in a digital way. So it enhances that communication even in an in-person way too.
Thank you for that. And Andrew, please.
We'll take every opportunity possible to engage with our under twenty-twos, so we will raise the children's funds in them.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the business for tonight. That's all the business, Convena. Thanks very much and thanks everyone for their attendance. Good night.